On the morning of August 25th, 2012, citizens of Flint, Michigan held a rally to demonstrate their anger over the illegally appointed emergency manager. They vowed to take over City Hall during the next city council meeting if action was not taken to return the elected mayor to power. With pillows and blankets, they waited outside City Hall for the meeting to begin.
Why don't you help me out by just telling me why we're here first off? What's gonna happen that you know about?
Well, I'll tell you why that I'm here.
Okay.
Tonight is a city council meeting and I want to show up to show the council's support to go forward with investigation of the emergency manager administration. I want to let the city council know that I feel very strongly that they need to find out all of the sort of crooked things that have been going on since this administration, Mike Brown's administration has taken over. Ultimately, to get to the repeal of Public Act 4, which is the emergency manager law that allows Governor Snyder to appoint whoever he wants to in cities or school districts as basically dictator.
So, do you think the problem originates with the governor? Or is it the problem just here in Flint?
No, it's not just here in Flint. The governor's definitely using the act that was passed. He passed Public Act 4 and he's using it not only in Flint, but he's using it in Detroit, he's using it in Pontiac, he's using it in Benton Harbor, he's using it in a couple other places that can't escape me right now.
How do you think it, what is his agenda? Do you think the governor that he is so interested in having this?
I'm not exactly, I don't know, I mean without getting conspiratorial. As far as what his agenda is, that's still up in the air as far as I'm concerned. I've heard people's ideas, I haven't come to a conclusion myself. I don't want to sound like a ridiculously radical left-winger by saying what I possibly think it is.
Okay.
But it doesn't matter. His motivations are supposed to be in the interest of getting cities that are down and out financially speaking back on their feet. The way that Governor Snyder's doing it is by giving basically absolute power to individuals that in some cases aren't even from where they're being appointed to, to do whatever they want to. And from the very set, from the very get-go, Public Act 4 is, as far as I'm concerned, a direct attack on the democratic rights of citizens. It removes our voting power. We have no say in what decisions are made after the emergency manager is appointed.
Besides not being the person that was elected into office, what do you think the other things that have happened that have caused problems for the people in Flint? What are some of the other problems?
You mean, you just want me to talk about problems in Flint?
Well, I mean, why, what do you think are the problems that are related to having an emergency manager? That we've had, since we've had the emergency manager, what do you think some of the problems are that we've been having?
Well, there's a couple corporations in Flint that have received fairly large tax abatements with the return promise. One of them, I can't remember the name of them, there's some kind of like old companies or something. I should know that. But they received very large tax abatements and one company promised to hire like five new employees, the other company promised to just not fire any of them. So like, we're giving tax abatements to corporations, but we're, Governor Snyder's creating new assessments on like streetlights for the citizens that have our...
What about the water?
Water rates have gone ridiculously high. I bet you that there's probably not very many water bills under $100 in the city right now.
Per month, right?
Yeah, per month.
Have you ever compared that to somebody who has the same water that lives in the suburbs?
Yes, it's maybe less than $100. I don't know, I don't know some of the numbers.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I happen to know that I know my bill runs maybe $120 every three months and I have the same water. Yeah, so I, yeah, yeah, so I understand your pain. And then, anything else?
250% of what, I'm paying 250% of what you're paying.
Yeah, and it's the same water. It all comes from Detroit, it's the same place. So, that was one of the big things that jumped out at me. So, what else? Anything else you have to say about it? Or what do you hope to happen in here anyway?
I hope that we can get every single city council person invigorated to go through with this investigation and bring out some information, some truths that are really blatant, smack in the face.
Yeah.
And then disseminate that information so that the rest of Flint citizenry knows what's going on so that when they go to the ballot in November that they can actually vote to get rid of PA 4.
Yes.
That's what I hope for. I also hope this event will be educational to the people that come here too, myself included, to learn more about PA 4 and what Mike Brown is doing. So hopefully this will be educational and motivational. Educational for the people that are involved and motivational for city council members.
Did you want to give your name? Because I never did ask you your name.
My name is Blair Neefert.
Great, and you're a Flint resident, right?
Yes.
Cool. Okay. Okay, why don't you give me your name first off? So I, already said, alright?
Bob...
Bob Marley?
Commit to fit.
Okay, cool.
No, I'm Phil Jaxx.
Okay.
29 years old, live in the city of Flint. And I'm pretty much just kind of a full-time silly person.
Yeah.
I mean activist.
Activist.
It's about the same thing, it's not much different. Because if you ever get into politics or anything like that, it's rather silly and you gotta learn to laugh about it.
Yeah, I feel like you're shouting into the wind apparently, huh?
Yeah.
So, why are you here?
Oh, today?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, proverbial why are we here? What is my direct action today? I'm here, you know, there's gonna be a little protest possibly, I don't know, we're gonna see what's gonna happen, no one really knows. But we've been having some problems in the United States of America and there's like this big group of people and they're called rich. I like to call them assholes, but they're rich. And these really, really rich people think it's unfair when there's an equal opportunity for people to compete with them for wealth. And so they try and do things called corruption, which is like legislating ways to keep them rich and keep competition away. And that's gotten really, really bad and they've been really successful at it and they get really, really rich and everyone else can get really, really, really poor. So, that's been happening a little bit here in our city of Flint and...
A little?
A little, a little bit, yeah. So, we're kinda here about that a little bit, but more specifically what's happened is like, we started this country thing, it's like a little experiment, they call it the US of A. And it started, you know, a couple years ago, like 200 something, whatever. And the whole idea was that people aren't servants of the rich or peasants to be ruled by the rich without choice. That people should empower themselves and have their own governance and their own rights, like to talk and to like pick your religion and, you know, to be happy and just, you know, basic silly stuff that why would someone have the right for that? So, one of these rights that we thought that we should have was the right to elect our own government. You know, to pick who rules us and make them servants of the public instead of rulers of the public. And over the years, it's kinda gotten distorted and corrupted by influence of money and power and wealth. And recently, they decided that we don't need the right to elect our own people anymore and they passed this law called Public Act 4. It's Public Act 4 of 2011 passed by Governor Schneider, Rick Schneider. He's a total douche. I think he douches with a whole stick of fire ants every morning or something. I don't know what his problem is, but he's got some type of problem. Maybe he's ignorant, that's it, maybe he's just ignorant. But anyway, so he passed this Public Act 4. And in this Public Act 4, it allows him to basically declare a financial emergency. And he wrote it so vaguely, he could do it over nearly any municipality in the entire state of Michigan. Now, once under financial emergency, he's declared, we no longer have an elected government and we no longer have the right to redress our government, we no longer have the right to anything really. Because he can put this emergency manager in there that we like to call a dictator because, I mean, you can call it a pile of shit or you can call it a flower, but if it's really a pile of shit, it's a pile of shit. I don't care what you want to call it, it's a pile of shit. So, we're gonna call this guy a dictator, not an emergency manager.
You could call it compost.
You could call it compost, yep. So, we get this emergency manager and under the emergency manager, they can dissolve an entire municipal entity. So, you know, people got together incorporated and formed a city, you know, and that's the city of Flint in this example. He could dissolve that entire municipality, he can collect all the tax dollars from that municipality, do whatever he wants with them, spend them however he wants, keep no records, have no accountability. The people can't vote him out, he can change any laws, dissolve our city charter, increase raises, or increase taxes, impose taxes, impose fees, all sorts of stuff without us having any option of redress. So, the people in Michigan were like, whoa, 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 this is it, right? Man, we spent our whole lives being told for generation after generation that one of the basic fundamenting, fundamental founding principles of this nation is that we have the freedom to pick our own government and if we don't like what they're doing, we can swap them out and be like, get out of here jerky, we want something better, you know?
How did they?
So, like, it just, it just ended right there with PA 4. So, the people got together, they petitioned, we got that law temporarily suspended for now until the November 6 election in a couple months where we get to vote on whether we like that law or not. So, now that that law is gone, we no longer have an emergency dictator over the city of Flint. His name was Michael Brown. Right before Michael Brown lost his dictatorship in the 11th hour, he passed like 60 resolutions and a bunch of those were really, really, really corrupt. He sold off Genesee Towers for $1 to some of his homies, his cronies, they're called Up-Down Redevelopment. It's owned by eight dudes, a bunch of rich guys, most of them make about 1,000 to 2,000 times the average citizen of Flint. So, they don't really need any more money, let alone a $9 million piece of real estate the city of Flint taxpayers just paid for. Selling it for a buck? What? I'll give you two, that's a 200% increase on your, you know, on your sale right there, man. Hey, man, would you pay more than two bucks?
I'd pay three.
Oh, we got an auction going now, we got an auction going. I got three, I got three, I got three, four, four, do I hear four? Anyone, anyone? Four, prime real estate, done? Oh, okay, well, three it is then. Boom, you would've just got 300%. Are you dumb? Or you think that we're so dumb that we don't see the cronyism and corruption going on right there, Mike Brown? Think about it, man. So, council don't like this so much, they get their power back and they're like, hey, you know, that's not cool, you're selling off our public assets, you're increasing our water bills, you're imposing taxation without representation and no right to redress or petition for grievance, that's not cool, man. So, we're gonna do what's called an investigation for wrongdoing. Now, we try and do this investigation for wrongdoing and Governor comes in and he's like, wait, 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 I'm gonna illegally reenact this law that was taken off the books called Public Act 72. And with this illegal reenactment of that, because I'm not following due process of democracy to make this law possible, I'm gonna impose a new dictator on you that's gonna hire the old dictator to be the city administrator and then collectively, we're gonna block you guys from investigating us for doing any wrongdoing because we're obviously doing a bunch of wrongdoing. Alright, so you really think we're that dumb? So, the people of Flint are getting together today and we're gonna say, hey, you know what? You want to take away our freedom to choose our government? You want to try and block us from coming in and saying, wait, wait, we don't like what you're doing, we're gonna investigate it for wrongdoings? That's not gonna happen, not in this city. You know what? We were charged when we were born in this country with responsibility to protect the freedoms that millions died for and shed blood and limb and life and suffering to create freedom. It took centuries and centuries of humans struggling to create these basic freedoms. And we as citizens of this country and earth are charged with the responsibility upon birth to protect that and make sure it never falls ill or is destroyed. Even under the most dire of circumstance, they're using the excuse of financial emergency? No, that is not dire enough. There's no such thing as a dire enough circumstance to suspend the freedoms of the United States Constitution that we fought for. If anything, they should be expanded and increased so that we have more freedom and less subversion, less suppression, less oppression, and less, I don't know, whatever's bad. I'm not good at words here. So, we're meeting together today in defense of that because I got a little kid, she's a girl, she's awesome, name's Bella, and I'm not gonna leave her with some type of future where she can't elect her own representative, where she's some subservient serf of some rich douchebag asshole that's already got so much money, couldn't spend it if he tried, you know? But he just wants to subvert the American public and take my tax dollars out of my pocket just so we can have some more power and more money? How many yachts do you need? What? I don't know, that don't even make sense. What's wrong with you? What the hell is wrong with you? Kill yourself, you're no good, you're wasting the air that good people need. I hate you fascist dictator Republicans, die. Hi, I'm Phil Jaxx.
I just wanted to ask you one question though. How did that law get enacted in the first place? Was it ever on any kind of a ballot?
Nope.
How did it happen?
It was signed in by the Republican House and Senate and then the Republican governor signed it in.
So, there was no voting going on with the public?
There's no voting. We, in our country, we have what's called a democratically elected representative republic, which means we vote to pick the people who are gonna make decisions for us. But one of the failures of our constitution is that we trust them to act with the will of the people to represent us. Over time, that trust has been eroded away and they no longer do things to represent us and they do things like they're doing right now to represent private interests, special corporations so that they can make a lot of money. So, no, we voted the people in that made that, but we did not get to vote on that law.
Is there any way to find out who voted for that to begin with? To know which people are not to vote the next time?
Oh, yeah, it's public record.
Yeah.
It's a public record. You can, I don't know, you can go to statemichigan.gov and you can start searching Public Act 4 2011 and you can find out who voted, how many yeses, how many noes. There's also websites called maplighting.org where you can see the dollars behind those. So, on statemichigan.gov, you can see who voted, but you can't see why they voted or what they got paid for that vote.
Yeah.
We created something in America called lobbying where someone with money can go to a politician and give them money. And it's just coincidence almost all the time that the person that gave that politician that money, now that politician votes in favor of something they want. So, maplighting.org is a website that people can follow or that can go to follow those dollars and see who got paid how much to vote. You'd be surprised, you might think that they're getting paid off big, hell no. A lot of these guys are paying like 50, 100, 200 bucks. Your democratic right, their vote, is for sale, for cheap.
Yeah. Cool. Anything else?
Um, I'm tired. It's my birthday yesterday.
Oh, happy birthday.
4,087 years old now.
Great, great. You look really good.
Yeah, yeah, you know. I was born with an odd genetic defect.
Yeah, you just never...
Never really aged much, just really slowly, really slowly.
Okay, cool. I don't know how that happens, it's weird.
I've been working way too hard lately. I don't get paid for my work, it sucks. But it's rewarding in and of itself. I really like the color green. I don't know why, I think I'm like an earth sign, so it is what I like that.
Yeah, maybe that's it, okay.
Organic food's cool.
Yeah, organic gardening is also cool.
I really would like to someday get a bunch of pet toads and sew little clothes for them.
Yeah.
And then like, see if I can teach them to act out a small play with a little cardboard set.
That'd be cool. Anything else?
Oh, yeah, I mean...
You're gonna keep going, are you?
If you put a camera on me and let me talk, I'll keep going. Some more serious things, I mean, get to talk about these problems that we face in our country right now. So, one thing that I brought up there is that we trust our elected officials to act in accordance of public will. Well, that trust is obviously violated more often than not. And I think that we need to make some changes to our constitution, our US constitution, that changes that so that we no longer just trust members of our elected government to act in accordance to the people, but we require them to act in accordance to the people. And I think that's an important thing that we could do to maybe eliminate some of the corruption and cronyism. I mean, if we make a requirement that they have to act in majority vote, then that kinda ends that whole lobbying thing.
Yeah.
Because a company like Monsanto could pay them as much money as they want to prevent labeling of death chemicals inside of our foods, but if the public will is 81% in support of labeling death chemicals on our foods, then, sorry Monsanto, you can keep dropping as many dollars on that as you want. But law requires those elected representatives to vote in favor of the people's need. So, now we have to create a system of what is the people's need? How do you measure that? Well, polling, hell, we've been doing it since before we had computers or internet or anything. Public polling's existed for a long time and it's a great way to figure that out. I mean, if we went straight up democracy and had people vote on absolutely everything, I don't think that would work out so great because there's just too many things going on for us to vote on at all. So, that's one thing I think we should do to fix this country is require those elected representatives to act in public opinion. Another thing is there's just too much money, too much money in a small amount of people's hands out there. And we need to put limitations on that. We limit the smallest amount of money people have, we call it a minimum wage. But we need to have a maximum wage. And I think in a maximum wage system, if established properly, we could actually create a very progressive economy that would start getting rid of the division between classes and decreasing the gap of it. So, say we had a system in place where, alright, we got a minimum wage and that minimum wage under a basic 40 hours afforded someone about $10,000 a year, for example, okay, poverty class. And say we set the maximum wage at 100 times that, okay? So, for any person or entity, you got 100 times is their maximum income. So, anything they make over 100 times that in one calendar year, right, gets taxed at 100%. So, now that decreases the whole tax burden of everyone else.
Yeah.
And it actually gives profit motive for the wealthy to uplift the poor.
Yeah.
Check this out. Say you, we're using that $10,000 poverty class level example. So, 100 times that is $1 million a year. Say you own a restaurant, let's call it McDonald's. And say that McDonald's location pulls in $2 million a year of profit. Well, you're only allowed to keep that first million, right? So, that second million gets taxed at 100%, so you just didn't make it anymore, right? You paid it, but it got taken away from you, right? So, say you really would like to have an extra million dollars in your pocket, how are you gonna get it? Well, you and all the other millionaires out there, since that's the cap, start saying, well shit, instead of paying these guys the minimum wage of eight bucks an hour or whatever the heck it is, it only makes them $10,000 a year, let's just double their wages and now they're all making $20,000 a year. So, now you've just uplifted the poor by increasing their wage, but now that the lowest wage is $20,000 per year, you get to keep more money, you get to keep 100 times 20,000, you get to keep your whole $2 million bucks. So, it creates personal profit motive where if the rich want to continue to get richer, they have to uplift and bring the poor with them.
Yeah.
So, I think that a maximum wage system would be good. One of the arguments against it is that that stifles competition. I'm sorry, that doesn't stifle competition. If a lot of people live in a world where they're happy making 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60,000 dollars and they don't really get too competitive because they're happy with what they got.
Yeah.
But those people that do want competition, they are competitive, why are they competitive? Because they want more. Well, you can still get more when everyone is out there making 60 to 80,000, $40,000, $20,000, and you're like, shit, that's not enough for me, I want 100, 200, 400, 500, 600, a million. Well, then go work hard for it. And now you do have competition. You want to talk about stifling competition? The system we have right now with billionaires stifles competition. When you got like three different companies that completely dominate an entire industry, like the food industry, or maybe a cable industry, or maybe an energy industry, there is no competition in there. You want to say capitalism inspires competition? When there's monopoly, there is no competition because the small business can't compete with a giant monolithic corporation. Maximum wage would end those monopolies because it would restrict them to only a certain maximum wage. It'd create more competition because now instead of three businesses, and now instead of three businesses that are competing against each other, you have hundreds and tens of thousands of businesses taking up the same position.
Yeah.
It's just, it's about all I gotta say about that one.
Hello.
Should've been out here months and years ago.
You're coming to the meeting then, huh?
I come all the time.
Yep.
I come all the time.
You're coming for the meeting too, right? Are you?
Yeah.
Yep.
I had to let it be known.
So, are you in support of the emergency management law? No? Okay. Are you guys here for the meeting too? You're here for the meeting too?
I am.
And are you in support of the emergency manager?
No.
Okay, okay. I haven't found one either that was. No, I was just wondering if anybody was, that's why I was curious. Okay, cool.
That in the paper was an activist back in the day. And she said, "I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired." And what she was talking about was the way that people were being treated, poor housing and all the conditions of mankind, period.
Yes.
And she had been walking around trying to get people stirred up and people were acting like they just didn't care. And so she let them know she was sick and tired. Well, today, I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired. The sly, the slick, and the wicked has taken over Flint.
Yes.
The sly being Ed Kirks, the slick being Brown, and the wicked being Mr. Snyder. It's time for people to stand up. Because they don't care about any part of Flint except the downtown area. The downtown area is looking gorgeous, it's looking wonderful, but the rest of the city is dying and they're helping it to die. They taking things over. The Republicans have lost their minds. They think that they're God.
Well, what are some of the things that have went wrong recently since we've had the emergency manager?
What's went wrong recently is he got the food bank and so, and signed and gave them three and a half acres of Brennan Community Park for a dollar to build a road in there and to build 140 parking spaces under pretense that they're helping the city, they're helping the citizens over there. They don't care nothing about what we say and do over there, they're doing what they want to do. Another thing that's gone wrong is that why do we have two police chiefs? Why do we have two DCED people? Why do we have two people in Treasury? Why do we have two people downstairs for hiring? Why do we have two people? They're making all of that money. And another thing is, we're $4 million more in debt than we were when he came. So, how's he helping us save any money?
Yes.
And he's giving away, he's already given away Pierce Park, now he wants to give away Brennan Park and anything else that he can give away.
Right.
It's time for us to wake up. And when he put that .6 mill to go on our, on the ballot, we need to vote that down. And every mill they put on that ballot, we need to vote it down until they start hearing us. Why are we taking care of them? They're pimping us. They're pimping us. They're treating us just like we're a bunch of prostitutes. They come to us when they need money and when they don't need nothing, they kick us to the curb.
Okay.
So, I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired.
And you're going to the meeting today and do you mind if I get your name? Mind if I?
My name is Barbara Griffith Wilson.
Okay, cool, great.
And I'm sick and tired of this.
Right.
And what's more is I'm sick and tired of people who live in the city who are so afraid to speak out about what's right.
Yes.
You know, when we, they're messing with the senior milletage and everything now. And when they started messing with the senior milletage, people in the center said, well, you know, I think that's because she's, they're fighting about the park and so that's what they're doing. Get the real, get the real facts. Get the real facts about what's going on.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sick and tired of people. It's time for us to stand up.
Okay.
Stand up, that's what it's time for us to do. Either you're gonna be about this city or you're gonna be about throwing bricks and and keeping the city from going forward.
Yes.
Downtown is beautiful. It's absolutely gorgeous down there. You can go down there, you can feel safe and sound. The police ain't gonna, ain't nobody gonna bother you because the police down there. If a fire break out, the fireman gonna be right there. But we shouldn't pay for it. Let them pay for it. Let Uptown Development pay for it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, okay.
Let my foundation pay for it.
Yeah.
The people don't need to pay for that.
Yeah, well, thanks a lot.
No, I'm sorry, I'm just passionate and I'm just sick and tired.
Okay.
What do you mean? Go, go in without clothing and you, you know there's no...
Well, I'm wearing a pillowcase. And a cape.
Okay, Barbara, you wanna play the game? I just told you what, what...
Not really a game, really. I don't know any laws saying I can't come in here. I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait until I find some people to come by.
Yes, we should wait till we find some people to come by.
Yes.
We'll talk to them about that.
While I'm waiting, you're going in, I'm gonna sign up. At, uh, at this talking thing.
Yes.
Okay, so what are you guys gonna do if you can't sleep in? What are you planning to do then? If you can't sleep in?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait for, uh, my elected officials.
Okay.
Ask them. I mean, I should check out my city code right now. It's on my phone. Pretty sure I can bring a pillow anywhere I want. It's just a pillow.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm blanking.
Don't you dare take that down.
What?
Make them arrest you.
My pillow?
What are they gonna charge you with? If they got room for you because you got...
Pillow possession.
...they're gonna do them with rapists and murderers, okay?
Hey, how you doing?
Great, great, great. How are you doing? Mr. Kelly, I haven't seen you in a long time. Civil rights. Okay, well, we know which side of the issue you're on. Oh, and he's still got his pillows. I gotta go, I gotta go see what they're gonna do to him.
Well, this is United States of America. I'm a taxpayer.
I'm gonna have to ask you to have my orders.
I have, I have a constitution right now. If you're not familiar with this document, it's pretty radical. It's kinda old.
I read.
This is a Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States of America.
Okay, but I have my orders.
There's nothing, it says I can't bring a pillow in here.
You can't come in here with your pillows and your blankets. Your order wasn't coming here. Your pillow and your blanket. Nobody misdo this, I promise.
Under what law can I not bring my pillow in?
I have orders.
I got arthritis and it helps me be more comfortable when I sit down.
Bring, bring a law. Bring a law that says a man can't bring a pillow in here. Bring a written law. Just 'cause somebody woke up this morning.
It's a pillow.
They can't make laws like that.
Why don't you...
Why don't you...
You're not, you're not allowed to with it.
Under what law?
You're not allowed.
Under what law?
Yeah, I know, but...
Your orders, you're doing course law.
Right now you're impeding the flow of people coming in.
I can, I can step this way.
No, you're stepping out.
I can step this, is, am I in anybody's way? Am I impeding anyone's flow right now?
Nope.
Does anyone have... No, no. I don't think anyone thinks I'm impeding their flow. Um, I mean, if you guys could tell me under what law I can't bring my pillow and sleeping bag in here.
I have my orders.
An order, I can understand an order, but under what law do you have an order? No, there's no law. You, you can ask me to do things within the realm of the law.
It is, I've given you orders.
Yeah, yeah, within the realm of the law, but you can't, like, if you, if you ordered me to jump up and down, I don't have to jump up and down. If you ordered me to wear a purple hat, I don't have to wear a purple hat. If you ordered me to silence my freedom of speech, I don't have to... I don't think I've...
Let them do their jobs.
Just sit down. I'd like to speak with my city attorney. I'd like to speak with my city attorney.
City attorney, I have a seventeen...
Be made, though. You need to tell me, wait, wait, you gotta tell me the rule that you're enforcing here. You're not following your force, you have no enforcement. You want me to do for you too? Want me to do circus tricks?
I didn't ask all of that.
I asked you a simple question, plain English, can you please...
Yeah, but you have no authority over me unless you have an ordinance that you are gonna cite me with.
I just asked you a simple question.
I'm, I'm just trying to say the police, no, no one needs to say anything.
Do I understand him, sir?
Do they wanna sort it out? They know.
Say what, say what?
I'll let you, I'll stay in here for you with my pillow.
This is my protest sign, though. Are you gonna tell me I can't have a protest sign in here?
I want to say that you can have a protest sign.
Now you're forty words, you're small.
You got other, they got a protest sign.
They just gotta follow a chief's order.
Chief got a legal order.
But the emergency manager, they don't have to let that go.
I'm on a fixed income. I ain't got no more money to give. I'm broke.
I never...
Did you ask for a license to search your pillows? I mean, it seems like that would alleviate, you know, any problems to get searched.
They can't, I don't allow no illegal search or seizures. I don't, I don't take, I don't get, let people tell me to jump. You know what I mean? Like, I'm in here lawfully right now and I'm getting an unlawful order from somebody that's supposed to be enforcing the law here. I don't know, I don't know where they got these orders from, but, uh, it's not a lawful order. I don't see nothing posted out here that says no pillows. I definitely don't see nothing that says no protest signs because that's what I'm carrying here. So, I, I don't really understand what's happening. Sleeping bag, computer, protest sign. I was told that I can't bring my pillow. I, I... Just as many people this way as I want. The news, the news media's pissed off. But they're legal artists. So let them, let them give me some other orders and libel. No, I agree with that. And they don't feel like they got something bad. If it says something in there, obviously, it's illegal. I should get out there. They arrest me for this, that'll get that out there.
Who's gonna get out there?
I mean, we got the media, they're right here behind us, twenty-five.
Right, right. They're gonna speak about you for maybe a day or two.
There's enough people saying the same message I got right now.
I'm on duty right now, I have orders.
I appreciate what you're saying, though. I disagree with you.
Do you know who I am?
So how you doing there? Are you gonna, are you gonna get arrested or are you gonna bring your pillow?
I don't know, we're gonna find out. We're gonna find out. Thank you. Any law saying I can't bring a pillow or sleeping bag in here?
No.
So if they're threatening you to be arrested, I can still come in? All right, thank you.
Thank you, I'm allowed to bring my pillow and sleeping bag in. Yes.
A pillow episode has been resolved.
Um, well, Pete, he's just, he's the city attorney. He just asked me if I could, I said, "Hey Pete, is there any law saying I can't bring a pillow or sleeping bag in?" And he said, "No." I said, "So if I bring my pillow and sleeping bag in, I'm okay, I can't get arrested?" He's like, "Absolutely." I really hope not, but I mean, in the defense of democracy, if I have to, I would. Yeah, if I have to, I would. I mean, I got stuff to do. I really don't want to. When I was born, we were charged with the responsibility to protect democracy. And, uh, I'm not leaving my country to life without...
Is there any special order on the finish of this, Mr. President?
No, Mr. President.
And quickly, is there any additional communication to be placed outside of that?
No, not at this time.
Now it's time to set aside for the audience to address the Flint City Council. We have a number of speakers here this evening. I've been, uh, pretty liberal in the past in giving individuals extra time, but because we have so many speakers here and everybody wants to have the opportunity to speak, I'm gonna make sure that you, uh, please limit your comments to five minutes. We will notify you when your five minutes are up. Uh, Council Rule 27.5, any person being heard at the City Council meeting may be called to order by myself or any of my colleagues. Council Rule 27.7, any person who was called to order shall thereupon take his or her seat. I'm just going to ask you to wait until there's a determination so that we can move the meeting forward. I will let you know that, um, you're to be remain and no personal attacks on individuals or individuals' interests. And again, if you have your five minutes and you do not, um, um, follow the five minute rule, we will ask for you to subdue your seat. If you don't have your seat, we're gonna ask to have the rule removed from the council chambers. And that's because we have so many speakers this evening. And I want everybody to have the opportunity so that everybody can hear, um, what those individual speakers can say. First, could we call the statement, the panel?
Thank you, Mr. President, and to my council members. I come here this evening not representing Jack Copler. I'm representing the city of Flint. I'm representing my constituents that have been put under chains. That's what I represent this evening. And this bondage must stop. This bondage must stop. I quote from a Flint Journal yesterday's newspaper. Mr. Brown is saying Mr. Kirks has the power as emergency financial manager to decide the cash-strapped city will not spend money on resources on a council investigation hearing. But on the other hand, Mr. Brown sold the same cash-strapped city's towers, better known as Jemison Towers, for one dollar. What planet, Mr. Brown, are you living on? What planet are you living on? That belongs to the constituents that live in this city. Mr. Brown has not paid not one dime, neither has Mr. Kirks, for that building. But I paid, you paid, and these people out here paid. It is, and they must know this, the people's building, they paid for it, not the two overseers of this community that was sitting here by almighty Pharaoh, Mr. Snead. And I'm keeping it real, because that's what's going on, okay? Mr. Kirks issued a directive that council has no authority to issue referrals as to how Mr. Brown and Mr. Kirks spend the city's money, the people's money. We can't keep a question there on how the money was spent. Well, you know what? I didn't particularly care for Mr. Williams, but one thing I have to give it to him, he did allow us to have an investigative hearing, even though it was ugly. He allowed us to have this. But these two and council, whatever we have to do, if we have to take it to the sidewalks and subpoena them to the sidewalks, they gotta come. And somehow, we gotta make it out. We gotta spend our hard-earned money. And it's part of me, it's part of them, and I'm sure some of you are being hurt. And I'm sick and tired of being hurt by Pharaohs. But one thing I do know, and nobody says, is woe on the leaders that bring atrocities on the least of these. So if it don't come to Mr. Kirks and it don't come to Mr. Brown, it's coming to the people that are in their generations. And it can roll off from one generation all the way to ten generations. So they must know this. Council, we gotta stand up. And whatever...
Our next speaker is Mr. Angel. Mr. Angel. Mr. Neo. My name is Peter. Thank you for coming, Mr. Angel. Pull your white down, just, pull your white down just a little bit so the audience can hear you. Very well, thank you.
I would have a little bit of, but she's dead. I'm a very, well, I was doing a good work, but since this council made the major office, we understand. You have to mention, no reason, no message for it. We have been in service for this, to change this world. The city is saying, "Couples, let's stop crying, let's stop doing this." This is what we've been doing. Straight away from nothing, no right from the city. They don't pay for it, they don't wire, they don't, we do this for the service to the city. And I would have to buy it, it's done. That's not council city, and I feel we have to say, in the city, it benefits from everything you do. That's why. Thank you, Mr. Angel.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Angel. Our next speaker, Matt Kirk.
Robert Young.
Mr. Robert Young.
Robert Young. I called the city about, uh, I said about two weeks ago, my address is, uh, Fort Sixteen, Seventeen, Calvary Avenue. And the reason I called the city of Flint is because I got pedophiles that's living on my, well, I got pedophiles living in front of me. Now, I called about, uh, a house that's on the corner of, uh, my address, Fort Sixteen, Seventeen, Calvary Avenue. Now, the house sits on the corner, it's on Baltimore and Calvary Avenue. Now, I got pedophiles and I'm telling them what else. Now, I called about this house being boarded up, it's not boarded up. Now, I got kids on, I got kids on that street, up and down the street. Kids going in that house that's on the corner, it's not boarded up. Now, I can see the pedophiles on my bedroom side. Once they come on the other side, you can't see them. So, that house needs to be boarded up or tore down. Now, what I'd like is about, you wanna raise my, uh, my water bill, which can jump up to a hundred and forty dollars. Now, uh, instead of you raising my water bill, you need to be putting more fistoffers out on the street. You understand that? I have one, I have one more thing to say. Need to take... Need to take this city hall, tear it down, and build it back up. You know, the mud man, all of you are nothing but a bunch of crooks.
The next speaker is Ms. Carolyn Shannon. Ms. Carolyn Shannon.
To the honorable counsel, to the honorable President Scott King, to the honorable Senator Alix Brown. I'm here today to let you know that I woke up, I'm standing up, and I'm asking you to get up for Flint. You cannot let Republicans tell you what to do. Ever since I was a little girl, I was taught by some very good people to be a Democrat. And as long as I've been in the city of Flint, I've been a Democrat. And I'm asking you to stand up for democracy. Because we have lost that in this city. We cannot have anyone coming in this city taking money out of our pockets, putting it in their pockets. I'm gonna say it again. Chief Alvern Locke does not need someone babysitting him. He doesn't need a nanny. He knows what he's doing. Take that hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and put one more police officer in his home and one more fire department. Everything that happens here is elementary. I'm telling you, the checks and balances, you should fight for that right to check somebody. Check anybody that will take money out of your pocket and put it in their pocket. Why should anyone get fourteen thousand dollars a month? And you get seven thousand dollars for your job? I'm asking you to fight for your salaries back. We do not want carpetbaggers to come in the city of Flint, pay taxes somewhere else. When they fill up their tank, they fill it up in another city. When they eat out at restaurants, they eat out in another city. They just come here for the reason of Snyder. He is not good for the state of Michigan. He's not good for people like you and me. He's only good for the rich. These people are getting paid, but are you, are any of the people you know getting paid? We already have an administrator, Mr. Easton. Why would Mr. Easton be replaced without an investigation? It should be an investigation. He should be put back on his job. And the mayor, I worked for him from dawn to dusk. And I'm asking him to step up to the plate, put this administrator back in place. If something is wrong with the administrator, he should not be the fall guy. And it's a lot of people should be the fall guy for, for this administration. We've got very good people here in the city of Flint. It is time for us to step up to the plate with our courage, with our strength, with our perseverance, with our love of the city. And I appreciate it. If you get a steering committee, the master plan for McCree Theater, I think we deserve a state-of-the-art building, a CrossFit dot, door and writer, and I will keep saying that until you give me the deeds so I can give a deed to Mr. Charles Winfrey. It's high time. My children went to McCree Theater. They're all adults. One of my daughters could see, the other one couldn't. Mr. Winfrey said, "You step in the back." That's because she couldn't see, he said, "Don't say nothing." She remembers that. So I'm seeing that McCree has been in existence for over thirty years. And I'm asking you, Danny Walling told me and Mrs. Willie James that we, if we didn't own that space, the CrossFit lot, the writer on South San Diego, and Chippewa, on the backside, the Chippewa side, and the front. Thank you very much. We deserve a deed.
Our next speaker, Matt Carter.
Mr. A.C. Dumas.
A.C., just started. Councilman Freeman?
Yes.
Do open that other door with the back door.
My name is A.C. Dumas, and I take note that the, uh, city attorney left out. I gave him a document and let him know that I would be speaking to him along with the city council. Uh, Michigan GOP, that's the Grand Ole Park, AG shooting, Rizal Ray, zombie emergency manager law, PA 72, using, uh, not fourth right law. In other words, zombie means dead. It's things, this is the law. Whenever a statute or any part thereof shall be repealed by a subsequent statute, such statute or any part thereof so repealed shall not be revived by the repeal of a subsequent repealing statute. That's what you were saying. Other words, when four came in, seventy-two was dead, gone. Not like Jesus rises again. It's gone. Wait just a minute. So we have this big argument or question between the chief justice, Robert Young Jr. of the Michigan Supreme Court. Now, I'm gonna read this. There's one issue that is received as important, perhaps is the very important, uh, issue. But one of the signed claims of deficiency is that petitions, this was talked about, when we took the four petition, Public Act Four to the, uh, Supreme Court. The seat is gonna go on the ballot, so this is a few, few weeks ago. It said, "It is asserted that the effect of the referendum will cause a prior law to spring into effect." Are you familiar with this? And he's talking to the representative, the attorney for citizens for fiscal responsibility. And John French said, "I am." Justice Young said, "And do you have a position?" I read, now listen to this, I read the Attorney General's position that said that this law was suspended, that the prior law would go into effect, and we would provide a copy of the document to the court. Justice Young, I'm asking you about the statute. See, I, he's veering out there. Justice Young, yes, I understand the statute. I'm reading real fast. Justice Young, the statute says, "Whenever a statute or a part thereof is repealed by a subsequent statute, such statute or any part thereof so repealed shall not be revived by repeal of su- subsequent statute." And he's a dead. Let me get to the good part. And JP has the, that's the old guy. And I think it's question, wait, and I think it's a question that does not face this court. Other words, he told the justice, that ain't before you. What's before you is, is Public Act Four is going on the ballot now. Now, what arrogance are you telling the chief justice of the Michigan Supreme Court, who has to be a Republican, to tell him it ain't before you? Ms. Brown's time out's gonna count. You know, baseball, football, you call time, you call the clock. So time out's gonna, that's a time out. Justice Young, way off. We're not even dealing with a repeal. If this measure goes on the ballot, it merely suspends the emergency manager law, not a repeal. That is correct. Justice Young, okay? He leading them into a trap that he ain't smart enough to see. Okay? So what's the theory then of reviving the law? Is it not dead? The emergency manager isn't dead until the people choose, uh, to take it out. So how does the effect of a repeal created by the emergency fact of a manager law affect the repeal of the prior law? Well, if the law is enacted and repealed. All right, thank you, sir. The law is dead. Okay? Uh, John, uh, French, well, if the law is enacted and repeals the prior law, but then the law is no longer effective.
That's right.
It is out of contention. This is what Justice Young said. It's suspended. It is dead.
That's right.
This is, this is the Supreme Court justice, chief justice, telling them. Oh, let me finish up, let me wrap up. In the church, in the Baptist church, they get about four, five, half of them. The church guy, the pastor, let me close. Justice Young, Justice Young stated, "It's been repealed." However, the AG, and this, this is what he says. The AG is convinced that Public Act Seventy-Two is the law of the land, which until now has been repealed and needs to be voted on. It is my opinion that the law is dead and should not be, and should not be revived and cannot walk again on the face of this earth. This is from the justice of the Michigan Supreme Court, the chief justice. And so I ask, what can be done? Go to court. Go to circuit court. Challenge the AG because it's just opinions, it's interpretation. Until it be challenged, it is the law. But once you challenge it and it's ticked out, because no judge will rule over what the Michigan Supreme Court have already ruled. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Matt Carter.
Mr. Eric Mays. Mr. Eric Mays.
This is, this, this was a setup because politics makes strange bed felt. And I'm here to tell you, I called A.C. Dumas this weekend, and we made sure that we bought some time. He was gonna speak, and I can pick him back up. And I know behind me, I heard a man, he's a pastor. He already told y'all, it's a meeting to go to Trail Home. Pastor Holmes probably speak right in. It's a setup because we trying to get y'all to see something. Pastor Stewart is in the room, I think, other pastor. Mount Pister. And that pastor. Pastor Stewart T, he, he talk like this sometimes. And, and, and he was at, he was at Fox Avenue praying the other day with us. Pastor Friend and here, but the community to come together, Jack Poplar. I called her for the first time in my life. She did a good job with the chants. And, and, and Pastor Stewart, you know Pastor Williams said, "When you speak, sometime you have to make it plain and keep it simple." What Dumas read was some lead out.
Yes, sir.
What I'm supposed to do with Dumas and I talked about is following up and make it plain. What Dumas is saying is this, Pastor Holmes said it two meetings ago. He said, "The last page of Public Act Four repealed Public Act Seventy-Two." In other words, Ed Curtis is appointed right now in this city hall under Public Act Seventy-Two. Now, don't get it wrong. You know, me and Neely is at Shadow. We think that's the greatest church in the city of Flint on the point of leaving the place. But the point is, we talk all the time. I talked to Scott King K today, I talked to Brian Nolan, and I talked to Cyrus. And we all believe that Ed Curtis is illegally appointed in the city of Flint. We believe that Ed Curtis was illegally appointed right now as the emergency manager. He could not appoint my prime, the city minister. And in other words, what Dumas read is saying to us in plain language that the minute that we go over to circuit court and talk to Archie Haylon or Judge Yule and advocate that the city council and mayor will be back in power. I mean, that's what we believe. And so we fixing to start trying to make a lawsuit and get a motion the next day or two. And we believe you and the city attorney who was in on it, I'm telling you, Pastor the city attorney and Tim Herman, them, they was the ones who was the original plaintiffs. Pastor Neely telling us, they was the original plaintiffs in the lawsuit until we tied. In other words, what we saying is, he can't stick it. He can't, he, he can't get legal advice. And he's saying, uh, with Curtis there, he gonna help y'all get us out of here. But what we saying is that we got a lot of attorney friends, and we know how to grow a lawsuit, not know paper, whether they are. In the next two days or so, you'll see us move from city hall to circuit court. And Pastor, I mean, I know God is in the middle of this because look how many people God has brought to city council, and I'm telling you, they finna move over to the circuit court. And, and I believe that the state of Michigan, from Ben Harbor to Pontiac, to Highland Park to Detroit, is gonna look at Flint and how we deal legally with these emergency managers that they're trying to take our voting rights and demand. Flint, Flint, I'm gonna move to the county, but then when we do.
When we do.
When we do. When we do, I hope that the pastors will continue to be advised because the council and the mayor don't need some help. I'm starting out, and I want the people to know that, believe me in my heart, when I talk to Pastor Ryan Nelson, I talk to Pastor Flynn, and even when Pastor Stewart T is be like this, my best for Pastor, we go back to trucking bus. We know how to put people to work. We know how to create jobs. We know how to get some cash flowing. And I'm here to tell you, all we got to do is be proud, hang on, and we will provide some leadership. And it's always a power, they, they, they could release on the street, and we can create jobs. We don't do it with bottle water like Amory, sex will flow.
I think it's appropriate time to go ahead and add this resolution. This is gonna be add number one, and I think I just had to copy there. I had to make some amendments on this. But this resolution, I'll read it, and you have to type up corrections on this resolution. Light of two speakers, in the will of this body, in the will of the people. This resolution is appropriate at this time, and I'll read it to you. Resolution to seek injunction relief of the emergency financial manager. Whereas on August 8, 2012, the Emergency Financial Assistance Longboard appointed emergency financial manager to the city of Flint pursuant to PA seventy-two of nineteen ninety. And now therefore being resolved, consenting now for sales sheet, excuse me, sales seat injunction relief in the appropriate court to state the appointment of emergency financial manager. I move that resolution.
This may rule, has supported discussion. Roll out the court.
Ms. Popo?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman? Mr. Robert?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Lyle?
Yes.
Mr. Sarin?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
The role is seven years zero one. Pastor Latrell Holmes.
Free City Councils, let's see you all sitting in a place that you desire to be and that you should be. I want to just congratulate you on that last resolution. Because that's the right thing to do. The law that was given the interpretation by Attorney General Stewart is Michigan Power Law eight point four eight. In that law, as Mr. Dumas rightfully communicated to you all and said, when any law in his own book that's been repealed, it should not be reenacted. If you read your Attorney General's opinion, there is no legal definition in the state of Michigan for that word repeal. And so he looked back at Webster's Unabridged Dictionary, copyrighted in nineteen sixty-two. He defined the word that places in whatever act of the legislature act on and they pull back, or his words, that they kill is dead. So I encourage you tonight to proceed on with that action because we came down here tonight. We came down here tonight on the heels of what we expressed on Saturday morning at the Creme in front of a hundred of thousands of people. We had enough, we came tonight with the express intent to sleep, hold up your pillows. Ain't here to sleep in city hall tonight.
Yes.
And the only reason we not want to sleep tonight is because the emergency financial manager who has been appointed wrongly had the good sense to give you back access to the hall that belongs to the people. So we want you to stand with us. And I ask for the clergy to stand. I'd ask every pastor that here to stand up right now. That she brought down here tonight, that they don't stand by. Those chans need to fall from all of us, and they don't fall in no way.
The next speaker is Nahir Sharif.
My name is Nahir Sharif, and I came down here fully prepared to sit down and sleep in down here at Flint City Hall. I can't tell you why everyone else decided to come on down here. I can only tell you why I decided to come on down. Ed Curtis' decision to ban Flint City Council from using city resources to conduct an investigative hearing is the latest affront to our access to democracy. This decision is no better or no worse than prior decisions made by emergency manager Michael Brown. But this may be the decision that will incite outrage from the community. Even the reasoning that Curtis gave that the city is in a deficit is laughable at best. I have some critical questions for Ed Curtis. I wish he was here so he could answer those questions. So number one, where was this fiscal responsibility? When Mike Brown entered into contracts worth nearly a hundred million or one million dollars in staff? Number two, where was the financial stewardship when Jitsy Towers was sold for one dollar?
Alright.
Number three, where was this idea to create financially sound decisions when Mike Brown was brought in as a city administrator making the same amount that he did as emergency manager? It seems to me that this unequal application is only imposed when the outcome will benefit the people. Public Act four lies at the center of this theft of our democratic rights. This corporate and special interest shakedown to separate the people from our public assets. Never in the recorded history has given up democracy been the currency for financial stability. The only way the only way that we can overthrow this undemocratic regime is by going to the ballot box November sixth to repeal Public Act four. Everyone who showed up here tonight with a decision and a commitment to spend the night as a leader in this movement to take back our democracy. And please join us, six P.M., August twenty-ninth, at Greater Galilee Baptist Church for a strategy meeting. So we can as a community make the decision to take back what is ours, to take back our democracy, to overthrow this law, and to really educate our community of why we are suffering the way we are suffering. And to propose, I would say, alternative solution to this mess that Governor Snyder is trying to impose on us.
Before I call the next speaker, Sharif, you made me a good point. And I just want everyone to listen to what I am saying and remember this. When the city's audit was completed in December before Mike Brown, the emergency manager, took over the city. We had an audit and it was completed. And we had gone from about sixteen and a half, seventeen million dollar deficit down to eight million dollars. The audit reflects an eight million dollar deficit. Mike Brown took over in December. The fiscal year started in July. From July to June thirtieth of this year, when the audits completed, you'll see an increase in the deficit of about eight million dollars, right? So when the audit is done in December, the city of Flint has gone from a deficit of eight million dollars to a deficit of up sixteen. Remember that. Remember that, because they'll publish that audit. And I'll be sure to remind everyone that Mike Brown took this city in a deeper deficit than he did when he took over in December.
Our next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Mr. David Davenport.
Good evening, counsel. You know, as I was sitting back there, I really didn't want to say my name. I prayed to the Lord and I asked him, I said, let me be a man when I say it. I remember a couple of years ago, I was sitting here, I was crying, saying you can't lay off police officers and watch these people die. Everybody would be there, and called me crazy. Just like he just brought in Johnson to go help, to put in Johnson's style. A man from laying off fifty-six officers in the city is coming wanting in the country in homicide. Knowing and him claiming to be Democrat, the Democrat bodies are gonna start piling up. For a Democrat like that, I don't need a move. Now, they say for the love of money to rule all. I believe it. For the love of money is what allowed almost a hundred and twenty deaths for the last year or two. For the love of money is what allowed the situation to turn around. And we, or some citizens still haven't figured out that clearly these things are being done for you to do yourselves in here. They're not doing you, they're doing yourselves in here. They came to you and they said, we wanna do this, we wanna do this. And as long as it didn't affect you, oh, everything is fine. Now it's Lord helping, lets you have time the next year, I hope. It's Lord helping us. Please help me. I wanna get reelected this year. Nobody has control now. Other state that you can't vote for, as far as Mike Brown and Ed Curtis. They don't play well. They said, if you're weak minded enough to allow us to come in and you couldn't handle your finances, then you're gonna have to accept what we're doing to you. I'm sorry, you all like it. I've been knowing you for years. But I've been trying to tell you something, and you haven't listened. Because of the messenger, instead of listening to the message. And I'm saying something to you now. For all these political party titles after living. Because if it's not Democrats up here, it'll be Republicans to actually. It's not, it's all when you keep your minds bottled against each other. It's called discrimination. It's not racial discrimination, but it's human discrimination. Any pastor here can tell you that when Jesus goes to take you before God, he's not gonna say, was he a Democrat or what? We breathe the same, we worship the same. It took me a long time to understand that these parties were different. I noticed that Democrats should be Republicans, Republicans should be Democrats. All they did was switch the title on the people. And then everybody had a full flag, I'm a Democrat. I'm a Republican, no, you're a human. And you need to be treated and respected that way by the elected officials that you put in office. And right now you're sitting here because the elected officials you put in office couldn't do nothing. They can't be elected for this. Why? Because they're Democrats. All I'm saying is, is that we need to understand. They ask me, Mr. Davenport, why aren't you a Democrat? I belong to Jesus' party. That's it. And when I grow up the conscience to represent everyone, I'm not gonna worry about a party. As long as you agree and we are gonna represent you the same. That's why I asked for your support this morning. I'm not here for the fun. You think I won't be here, talking anymore right now, people, I'll take it against? I don't know why God got me in this position. And I'm questioning, just like I'm questioning why Mr. P. is the president and the leader of the nine? But that's his business, that's what God chose for, and that's what he chose for me. Let's put the ego's away, people. Let's get back on track. The only way we're gonna defeat this is to get someone in a higher office that can help ease the pain after they finish forcing this on you more. Thank you very much.
You are all we have.
Yeah.
And this cannot be an emotional thing, this place should be packed out. If you stay in this city, this impacting you, everybody. And look at how you're grabbing at me. Listen, I said I will be back. I am back with a vengeance. I am really highly upset, I am really teed off. I read this article here Sunday, right here, that was printed in here, all with a question mark on it. Containing that Ed Curtis is saying that it might create some problems on power struggle. It's no power struggle, we have a city charter, we hire the powers. We hire the powers. This compagination, calling, constantly to our city, walking south and for London, telling us what to do, and leaving, going I seventy-five and sixty-nine till they find a quarter, or leaving us here to feed for ourselves. But no more of Willie Lynch, y'all. No, baby, I'm old. I am not going back to Egypt, I'm not here upon a no favor. I think the silver has shackled on. Come on, we all are shackled now, don't take the question out your job, you in the same boat. And it's our responsibility, y'all, let me tell y'all this. Don't let this be the last time, that's all them accounting. It's still not the good powers, and if they don't do what we ask them to do, fold them out. Because if some things happen, try to the city manager coming in here. If you had coded correctly, they wouldn't be in here. I'm sick of it, I don't know what, this is the law. The things that you are doing to us in the city is despicable, disgraceful, disgusting, and outright lowdown. One woman intimidates, I'm really, the honest God tell the truth, we need to build bridges and not walls. Amen? And try to be coming out here, we heard Lord said a lot of times, we know who's in control. My mind is a little bit.
I'm gonna get on the chair. And I'm saying, I gotta, I gotta get up out of here. And I, put your ass.
I will bring you, permit, Mr. Please, to have the clerk go through and pull your shirt so you can promote this speaker right now.
Thank you.
Because I have to understand your opinion.
Mr. Please.
Mr. Please.
Thank you, very kind, you're welcome. We have talked about a lot of issues tonight. I'm going to pick up from the gentleman that brought up the education. Let me tell you all something. Five years ago, I had eighteen kids that built five houses at the Genesee area school. These kids can build, rebuild this city. Now, I can sit here and point fingers, but I'm not. We can hire these kids to rebuild the city of Flint. If we want to stop them from killing each other, give them a job. Here talking about, we are a sane society, and we sit here letting our kids kill each other. There's some very fundamental things that you can do. I don't want no job, but I can help put together a piece to hire these kids and adults. You won't listen. I was down here, I showed to the editor in the paper where the kids built these houses. Think you do it? We won't find every single thing. And don't even recognize them as humans. Now, what is that saying about us? What is that saying about us? Adults in this city, they can't read, they cannot write, and they cannot count. If we don't help that woman over there in the educational system, we're going to die. It ain't our fault. It is not her fault. The fault is on the folks who can read, who can write, and who can count. That's us. I have to agree. I'm not here to serve my city or my community. And we know why. Because I'm who I am. And somebody has to put us in check. Somebody has to do it. And it would be so easy for us to save my children. There's other issues that I could raise, but I'm not. I want to help serve on a committee to educate our community. That's what I want to do. I'm tired of going down here, getting upset, getting upset. Five things that are going on here. When I ought to be working with and talking to kids and adults who can't read right now, I want to help put that together and get some jobs. And the gentleman here raised the issue about the borderline. Look at the jobs sitting right on our nose. Look at the houses that need to be repaired. What is this? Why are we treating each other like this? It's a shame, disgrace. That's our money. It's our money. We wanted to rebuild I-75 and hire these kids so they can quit killing each other. Very simple. Very simple, very fundamental demand. They ain't threatening nobody. Go over there and look for records from the Flint Board of Education and ask the superintendent, "We got a skill center in this town." It closes every school day at 2:18 in the afternoon. That's insane. People ought to be in that place, only for us to pay. And they're not. City needs help and help for this community. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Davenport, chance.
Good evening, Councilor. Man, this is cool. Like, there's a lot of people here saying a lot of awesome stuff and all that, blah, 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 blah. Well, a lot of us came here really ticked off today, that's where they've been shining, really. There's people here that are ready to put their lives and bodies on the line to get arrested, to go to jail, to get beat in protection of democracy. So you guys can investigate, and that's awesome. Did we get that little sign, like, my girlfriend, she's pregnant, saying, like, "Don't beat me, I'm pregnant." I don't know if any of y'all are going to protest or anything like that. But when Rich Schneider signed PA4, taking away the mine from Citizens, Michigan, we were all sitting there and laughing, and I don't know if you remember this news, but we took over that building. We barricaded ourselves in there and got beat and maced and arrested, and the people took the people's building. The people are pissed off about this shit, excuse my French, but they're really mad and come to bring in sleeping bags and pillows. And I just want to say, if you're that mad, please don't fail us. Please do this investigation, send these guys to jail. And I don't want to see no country club jail that all these rich dudes always get off on. I don't want to see them. And they don't have to worry about being cut in the face by some jerk. I want to see them in the real prison we all go to, the Easter Room. And I want to see them there all the time. When we take public funds from any municipality, whether it's the richest municipality or whether it's the poorest in this nation, we're acting in treason against their people. We're told that this is the people's country, that it's the greatest place on earth. But when we look at the statistics, we have failing schools across the country, we got failing healthcare, we got failing governments, we got radical corruption, and it's all because the rich ain't paying their share. I'm here, what are we in deficit for, like fifteen million or something like that? That's a lot of dough, that's a lot of woes, man. But there's a seven-hundred-million-dollar corporation sitting in the city. Uptown redevelopment is owned by eight different men that can buy together worth more than a hundred million dollars. Where's their twenty-five percent and thirty percent tax? Because just on that uptown douches that are taking our water top, are taking our topple from us, that we pay ninety million dollars for. I don't know, they pay twenty-five percent taxes that have shelters. Maybe we have had that fifteen million that we're deficit for, but we have to do it. And if you do an investigation, push harder, guys, please. Because if you guys will push, and if the state wants to say, "Oh, you can't do this because this is illegal, send me to law," I am telling you, the people stand here, and we will let you do your investigation. We will barricade those doors, we will do whatever the heck we gotta do. And we'll stand here in defense of our city and defense of democracy, so that these people can get punished. But if we're going to do it, follow through, go to jail forever.
The next speaker is Mr. Brian Morrissey.
Alright, Scott. I came here today to sit in here, to really, really to sleep in defense of the democracy. I would have never thought a few months ago that I would be here supporting all of y'all. But, and just as I know, y'all know, you would have never expected all of these people here to be supporting y'all. Every person in this room is out here supporting y'all. Anybody not supporting these people? Anybody? Y'all not seen it? So, we're going to have to work real hard here after this meeting, after all this, to keep this level of support, I mean, to keep any kind of support. I want to address the people that really made all this happen today, though. I like, I like y'all, but I really want to address the people with the power here, the people taking a pain out of every day since we've been here. With Kurtz backing up, saying the name. What happened here today with Kurtz backing up, allowing y'all to do this investigation in these chambers, is because of what these people out here did. It was a threat of wanting their power back. Kurtz, the superior, slapping them. They got scared. They know what happens when people learn where the real power is. I hope y'all don't forget, I hope y'all learned what power y'all have out here and exercise this, because everybody up here, y'all get to power from these people here. So, that's what it is, I believe it today, no disrespect, turn around back on y'all, because I'm loving all y'all right now.
Our next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Is that the name Hazard? Ms. Hazard?
Ms. Hazard.
I don't have a lot to say, I'm going to be short, but I bought my house in Flint. Bought a house in Flint, maybe eight years ago, and most of it. Here since I moved in, my house and my son, they fall apart. And all my neighbors leave. Still say, I first, I kept the police door before rats were hiding in my homes. Police never came. I watched it broke, it didn't come, I was, police didn't get come for three hours. So, of course, these people at work, the big taxes, well, everybody's down, all the unions all around us now. I talked to my workers, "Yes, start hiring right in the mall, because the twenty is high, they want it." I don't know about this stuff. Then, the wire went way up, my best friend across the street's moving. For the ladies that lived in Flint thirty years, tears in their eyes, too, she's leaving. Because what they're doing here, they don't like the politics, so. It's just sad that nobody cares about the people that live here. I mean, I feel like you guys want people. I figure a few years, I should just leave this house. But I paid almost seventy thousand dollars, can't get ten for it. Can't get ten. So, it's just sad that you guys, the city works the way I work, it's for the tax payers. And then I read on MLive, people were mad because people went and protested. And they said, people in Flint, some people outsiders are saying, "We better wake up, we don't work here, we're just a bunch of whatever bones." That's not true, most people mind where it works. We're not rich, but the people work. So, that's all I can say.
Our next speaker, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry, I'm also sorry, I'm sorry. I would just like to say something about the pipeline. If we continue with these water rates the way they are right now, with their plans to raise taxes, we will have no need for a pipeline. We will not have the population to support the economy. That's what we're heading right now, is water. Everything else that's going on in this city, so. We're not going to have a need for a pipeline if we have no people in this community that want to drink water. Our next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Sawyer Nefer.
Good evening, Councilor, and my fellow citizens in Flint. I got to make a real quick announcement. I made an announcement about a strategic meeting at the Greater Downey Baptist Church, six o'clock on Wednesday. The address for that church is 4401A, Industrial Street, between Stewart and Black. Anybody that wants to come on and talk about how they can further support the council and try to repeal Public Act 4, make sure that happens. And, yeah, so. Real quick, just wanted to address Mr. Freeman about your question on how these investigations can, how they can help, solutions. One thing, as I mentioned, is the fact that the times that we live in right now are really confusing for people. We know that some real bad stuff is happening, but it's really hard for us to find out why these things are, what is actually happening and why these things are happening. And an investigation that's successful will show us some truths that we really need to know. And with the Public Act 4 being on the ballot, up for repeal on the ballot in November, we need to know why we should be voting that down. There's still a lot of people in this community, and in the greater community of Michigan, that don't even know what Public Act 4 is. And we've seen every attempt we had here, and we need to know exactly what's going on. And the last thing I want to say was that I'm really excited about being here and seeing, first of all, you guys voting unanimously to do this investigation. Not unanimously, but almost unanimously. That makes me feel proud to have a city council. I'm also even more proud to be in a room full of people that are speaking their minds, having firsts come up here, talk about their woes, and expose some truths, and staying together and trying to make this place better. So, thanks to you guys.
Mr. Chris Bellmaroni.
Thank you, my name is Chris Bellmaroni, and I live in Flint, Michigan. We've heard a lot of things tonight, but I think one of the solutions to many of our problems is that we bring pressure on those who benefit the most in what Brown and Kurtz have done. And we know where, if you look at the trail, if you follow the running trail, it leads to that river called Uptown. And one can agree on a foundation of that too. If this community brings pressure on that group and their interests, I think we will see far greater results. Imagine two hundred people every Saturday picking down on the Flint, uh, farmers' heart. Imagine them asking questions to the border reaches of the University of Michigan, asking them, "How is it that the University of Michigan moved their entire business school from the campus to the land in Flint? So, the Hyatt Regency, the old Hyatt Regency? How did that happen without a bid? That's where we need to be putting pressure on. Not that Kurtz and Brown are, are, you know, not part of this, but they are simply the pilots of escape. Others are pulling destruction, we need to right them, we need to fix them. Ask yourself this question, what is, what is the need for Uptown to acquire the downtown development parking lots adjacent to the Genesee Towers? They're gonna tear the towers down supposedly, according to the Flint Journal, and put a park there. Why do they need more parking down there? Keep in mind, it was Uptown in the chamber that came to this council, or to the city council, they had it this long, to build the Rutherford Parking Deck. Leading with the city, go ahead and do it. And I stood here and I says, don't back those bonds, don't do that. And we now know that every year we're paying over a hundred thousand dollars to back those bonds on the Rutherford Parking Deck, which at times, from what I am being told, people cannot even park in it, they will not allow people to park in it, to complement. It is a sin, it's a travesty. It is terrible. Hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to pay for a parking deck. I mean, we're talking more police, more fire. It is terrible. The food bank of Eastern Michigan wants to take over part of one of our parks, or go to a parking lot there. Bring pressure on them. Go to your unions, go to your employers and say it's a bad deal to donate to the food bank for all the good they do. At times, sometimes we need to, to hurt ourselves. Think about the sit-downers here in Flint, Michigan in nineteen thirty-six and thirty-seven. They gave up their Christmas, they gave up their New Years. They stayed in coal plants without heat.
Yes.
They took on the bosses of the company. What are we doing in our community? What is our sacrifice? We have men and women in our country fighting the war right now. What has been our sacrifice? Think of World War Two, think of the sacrifices that the men and women of this country, who are not directly within the service, think of the sacrifices that they gave up. The sacrifices they gave. When you do your investigative period, ask who issued the bonds, who was the underwriter for the bonds for the parking deck? There might be some surprises in there. You need to find out how you can get out from underneath that parking deck. Let the downtown development authority take care of that. If they think they should be able to sell those bonds to Uptown, maybe they could take care of it with the parking deck, their financial obligation. It's their civic responsibility, it's their moral responsibility, it's their legal responsibility. There are any things in this community that we can do to improve it, we just need to be doing that. The, the Kerry Diamond Water Authority, that's a bad deal. I'm sorry, council, I came here before, I said, don't do it. We heard a little bit about education this evening. The Flint, the, the Flint School Board came to the, the citizens of Flint and asked for four bills for a city fund to, to fix up the schools. I told the school board, don't do this right now. Well, someone here real quick, uh, don't do this right now, they are actually fixing schools, they fixed some schools up, and now they're closing. We will be paying for those repairs from the lights, parking, and, and all those improvements, and we're not even going to use the schools. Thank you.
Mr. Joe Lee.
Mr. Lee. Before everybody in council, out of due respect, uh, it's been a long time since I've been down here. I paid just as many taxes in Flint as any other big residence. And kinda, you know, like, I was kinda observing, I've been learning a lot. You know, seeing what's going on first. Seems like most of the time, most of the information, the journal though, before y'all seen the news on. You know, maybe I'm, I'm observing wrong, and here since I've been here, I see it all in the council. You know, I can tell by attitude, to the way someone's spoke, I'm not gonna point no finger that don't even, a city can't evict you. But all of y'all, like I, don't seem to mean. But like I say, I'm mostly observing, I'm not gonna point no whole lot of things. And uh, I've learned a lot, I, I've learned a lot from all of the citizens that's been getting the beat. That I've learned from y'all, and then that paper y'all passed out, there's not too much information in there. So, uh, maybe all, maybe all, maybe try to go to the media at the Flint Journal and get some more information. But I don't know, keep watching and listening, you know? And uh, I'm gonna be respectful, like the president said, be respectful. And uh, pray. Cause I'm a God-filled man, I believe in God, and uh, most of the time, I'll be back though. Is it on that paper with the next meeting? I didn't see it. Is it any, and then I gotta, just one more question, is there any other way to get information as to what Kurtz, Brown, DDA, and all of that by doing? Do you, do the council keep on witnessing that way? Where can I get the information from, other than Flint Journal? I have to go online. Okay? I appreciate y'all, and good work, keep trying to work hard for our city.
Yes, Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee, did you, um, you say you didn't see the next scheduled meeting date? It's on here, it's, um, scheduled for Monday, September the tenth, at five hundred. Nice meeting, Joe.
Our next speaker, Reverend Porter.
Our next speaker is Mr. Paul Allen.
Good evening, council. Yeah, I've been sitting over there, debating on how personal I should be with this line, those moving their home on. Debating on how far I should expose myself to, to think of this. And I tell people often that I was a second to the fire crew when the emergency manager took off. Because when he fired you, he fired me too. And I feel that the service that I provided to the council is very inefficient. I feel that the service that I provide to this community is even more so inefficient. Not everybody can make it down here five years. Not everybody can get what they need to get from a percentage half on channel twelve or channel forty-five. This meeting has gone on for almost two hours. How can our networks explain the intensity of this meeting in a minute and a half? It can't be done. The only way this community can stay informed, the only way those who are not here can know what's going on, is if this is broadcast on public access. It's the only way. But unfortunately, I have to quit, guys. I have to stop coming up here for free because I can't pay my rent. I'm gonna have to stay in the ways before closing. I can't take my life to the bathroom. Can't do it. Since January, I've been putting bills this out of a pocket that does not exist. When I made the order that the manager, uh, put you guys back into effect and, and made it so that you guys can host the meetings, I thought it was a good day. Wow, I'm back. But then I find out that they have bastardized your budget to the point where you can't buy toilet paper. A pen, a pencil, or a paperclip. So, my ability to help me continue to do this, I have to rely on something. Those of you who are watching this at home, find the value, and why I can provide to this ser, city for free. There's a value here. And it is a dollar, or two dollars, or five dollars, my God, they charged us one hundred and forty-three for the tower. And if you tear that down. I'm trying to bring this up. I'm trying to provide a service to this community, and then I read a press release in your packet, and it says that they have given public access away to the Flint schools. They've given away! To the next entity that's gonna be taking over, like the emergency management, so you know what that means. Public access is gonna die in Flint. And we're gonna let it happen. We're gonna let it happen, shame on you. I've been coming to this council for more than eleven, twelve, thirteen years. Explain the value of public access, how you need to embrace it, how this is your way to communicate with the people. And some of you have missed it. But not enough. Not enough. Your next meeting is September tenth, my birthday is September ninth, guys. I quit. I'm done. In all things purely social, we need to be a second to finish. But we gotta be one right to here, in all things beneficial, in all mutual matters.
Mr. Billy Leach, Chester. Mr. Leach, Chester.
Good evening, council, what's up? I like seeing y'all, but I don't have, I'm racing, so I can't see really nice out here. I'm putting a little bit of heat in, cause y'all, close up. Really, what I, I've learned is all the things, here tonight, after being down here a long time, and I've had some other meetings, and I just hope like we said, I ain't worried about the council members. I ain't worried about them. I like the whole us account. Now, you see what happens when we show up? When we show up, if we quit showing up, they relax. See what I'm saying? I gotta face y'all, cause I can't talk to them. It's our fault, I like, I like to look at my part without them. But we do need, right now, and we do need to stop this thing and keep the unity, so we can do what we're really down here for. Cause a lot of this other stuff that some of us have concerned and report can happen if Snyder and Jenna keep going. So, I hope we keep this unity going, you know, and do things for Flint, cause I got my opinion just too. I think when I was on the zoning board, I had a suspicion about really, it was just, hey, money wanna take over Flint, I follow money. Downtown, that's a lot of money going down there. I worked for General Motors for thirty-two years. General Motors, they never did nothing without planning. So, we all know that, people. So, listen, we gotta keep pressure up, so our people that vote, and look to this. But really, what we got here today, cause like I said, we want to, we want to get control back in our city. Hope we go to court, get Brown and out of here, keep that up, that other stuff, and everybody wanting to report, but that is written out there, it's second to you. We need to go to court. If that's how our system is set up, we don't lay down for anything. We don't lay down, but I like Kurtz, it looked like I was just telling a friend back there. He stood up next, but none of us liked what he said. Josh, you got guts. I don't really agree with all this politics, but you got guts. And I like the man with guts, we don't lay down. We appeal, that's the way this system is set up. We know that, uh, I ain't, I've been watching on TV for my eyes in the van, I ain't seen our attorney setting up, we all gonna deal over here. We know, so let's get to action, I hope we keep this up. I'm glad to be back down, I like this back. I'm mad at Gary, I'm gonna check it, I'm mad at Gary, cause he called all the important people, he didn't call Fred.
Our next speaker, Reverend Porter.
Kerry Ruston. Mr. Ruston. Kerry Ruston. Ellen Saleno. Ellen Saleno. Ellen Saleno. Lorenzo Avery.
All right, let me say, this is my first time ever coming to a meeting. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Is that good? All right, uh, I was worried a lot today, uh, basically. I was already upset about, about things that happened to my city, cause I was born and raised here in Flint. I don't know no other city. Uh, my saying was always to say, I'm born in Flint, because me, I'm leaving, pebbles on from the time I'm born. I love this city, and for what I've seen it happen, I was, I felt about it. Whenever I'm going to make cash, I'm saying, I can't wait to get back home. And now, I live on Fourth Street, and I've been on Fourth since nineteen eighty-three. And on the north side of my street, it's not a house occupied, I live in between Virg and Hall. And I said, a city lock hasn't been cut go one time. The grass gets so high, it's about, it gets about five to six feet, and then it kind of bend down a little bit, but it just, I got every kind of road, magical, scum, raccoon, possum, everything that go in.
Is your battery good?
I was pretty upset, a lot of things, a lot of bad things, I was dying.
Yeah, this is good.
But, a lot of things got done when it was inside. Um, the house was getting, uh, getting torn out. Uh, I had a lot across the street from me, he had a big truck, and they were going there for two, and he has my college students cleaning that lot. That was the first time that lot had been cleared. I know a lot of people might be upset if I'm saying something good about my truck, but I'm giving credit where credit is due. I haven't seen a house tore down since they took me by my office. I'm wondering if they're gonna ever start back, uh, uh, tearing down the house again? And then another thing, what I wanna say, I'm retired, I'm on the fixed income. My water bill, the, for last, I just got my water bill two weeks ago, it was two hundred and one dollars. Last month, it was a hundred and forty-one dollars. Then Snyder decided he wanted to raid my pension. I don't have a pension, I can't afford another penny. I need every dime I got to take care of my family. And I know a lot of people that's, that's retired from, we got a lot in this city. In this city, there's a lot of people that work their job, motive, and are retired. We can't afford anymore, I can't afford another high water bill, I don't think what they're doing now, fighting now, is illegal. And I am grateful to see the city council back, and I'm hoping and praying, okay? Y'all come together and stop all the infighting that I've seen that went on for the last twenty years, and nothing that's gotten done. And I feel that's the reason why I come. Our, our city got took over by, by the, by the city administrator. If y'all would have been doing your job, this would never happen in the first place. So, now I'm praying, I can feel in my heart, what they did is illegal, and y'all gonna get y'all jobs back? Get y'all do your jobs and take care of our city and take care of us. I love, I love this city, and I wanna get our police back, I wanna get our firefighters back. And I'm just tired of all the fighting. That's all I gotta say, thank you.
But I do want to throw out a couple of ideas that might be worth considering. Still knowing that we as a community are gonna have to make some, some hard choices. But the key phrase is us as a community are going to make those choices, and not somebody else to whom they're not accountable to us. Some of those ideas in terms of looking at revenue sources, and I think you've got to look systematically, because it's not just Flint is in this situation. We're further down the road than some of the other municipalities in Michigan. But the issue isn't simply local mismanagement, we all aware it's been some of that in the past. But the larger issue, contributing to difficulties in Flint, and Allen Park, Ekorst, Highland Park, and a dozen other cities, has to do with a revenue system that's broken. Cities can't rely on property tax revenues. We've heard from the same tonight, I bought my house for seventy thousand, I can't sell it for ten. When you multiply that with a retired city, that adds up. A mill doesn't generate the same what it did five years ago. And we have fewer residential-proof properties because we have fewer people with houses under properties. We've been demolishing and not building them. So we have to think seriously about what can we do to advocate for new, effective, sustainable, realistic urban policies on a state level? And that means be a resident. So I want for us as a community or as a council to be excited that we need to do that state advocacy and to team up with people from other parts because it's not just the big cities anymore that are having these difficulties. It's a lot of medium and small cities. And we need to join a common cause with them. Aside from that, I think that we do need to call attention to the role of the process. Because as we make these difficult decisions, process matters. It struck me this evening when Councilman Ken Cage said, please open the door. We need to have both doors open. Makes it like a small thing, but that's very symbolic. In a democracy, decisions are made in the open. People are accountable for what they say, for how they vote. People have a chance to weigh in. You may, you may disagree with what they say. But it's done in the open. The decisions that we've had made lately, whether you agree with the outcome of them or not, have not been made in the open. And that's something to tell everybody. Even if you think the towers need to come down, even if you think you don't really need CDCs, even if you could make a compelling case as to why there are two taxes that make it downtown, people who have to be in those positions need to defend them in an open forum. That was a particularly dangerous, I think, when those, they're not made publicly because you have an increased chance that they're going to be done in an inevitable way. But if you can make a case as to why there are two taxes that make it downtown, you could also make a case to tax payments to encourage business investment on North Saginaw or on MLK Pasadena. But they're not made in public so the taxes can then happen. And I hope that changes the case.
Our next speaker, Reverend Clark.
Mr. Jayden. Mr. Jester, yes, in mind.
Good evening, Council. How you doing? Good, I'm glad you're here. The idea began, my name is my friend. I've come here to complain. Not you as people, but the idea of pulling up city charter, the idea of the city council, you know, representing the people. But, um, I still remember that there was a day, I think it was September twelve, two thousand and eleven, you guys had a senate meeting. And I think the only people voting against you, the anniversary membership, were Neely and Sergeant Sweet. Is that correct? Thank you very much. Okay, now if you can hear it, the Lord is all you want, you know. I mean, you can like pull up the chains and stuff, but I remember when you put those chains on. That's all.
The next speaker is Mrs. Sharon Chita. Ms. Sharon Chita. The next speaker is Mr. Alex Harris. Mr. Alex Harris.
Well, I'm glad most everyone's gone. I love to be a center of attention, but, uh, I guess I won't make the point that I'm too busy.
Now, in New York City.
Yes. That's what I'd say to my wife if I say. You know, it's funny. It's just complimenting that young lady and young lady behind you actually, two of the most eloquent, uh, fine and indiscernible persons I've ever heard in life. There's been very fine articulate people that have spoken tonight. And, uh, and I don't afford to be able to mention everybody or even attempt to mention, uh, anyone. But, uh, makes me think and reflect on the many years I've been knocking my head and fighting these causes. Not ashamed that I helped with some other people that I'm looking at to, uh, to kick out one bad mayor. A little small grassroots group found out they could do something and actually pulled off something against what was, uh, considered a insurmountable position in a powerful mayor who would be thrown out of office. And actually, as far as I know nationally, something that had never been done in a city of this scale. And then a few years later, is, many of us were white, and that was a black mayor. But then a few years later, no, I don't, I don't remember that. A few years later, then we had a corrupt and degenerate old white gentleman that became mayor. And he led the city into the follies like Genesee Towers. Genesee Towers direct dissolve in shenanigans. But you know, like, five minutes isn't gonna cut it. And, and forgive me, and I said to my dear friend over on the, uh, north side of the council seat, and I'm not defending Republicans. I voted Republican most of my life, no question. I'm not gonna apologize to that either. But here's what I'm trying to say. Throw out your partisanship. Forget Republican to get Democrat. Because we've been separated in this community so long by black and white and, and Republican, Democrat, demonizing one or the other. Or this person's affluent and this person's poor. And this person must not be a nice person because they make a lot of money. These aren't the things that are American. And what I'm hitting at is, when you have a culture, a generation of poor municipal government. We had poor, poor leadership for a lot of years, my friends, right? Very poor. Forget whether they were black or they were white in this city. Because it's a mixture of both. And now we're in a situation where a very poor decision by what I think is a poor governor. But regardless of that, in appointing, these people here are mostly Democrat. Now, now, that's not my point. But don't be fooled by, oh, my gosh, the Democrats are the champions of this and the Republicans are the this or, or the conservatives or the liberals. My point is that there's a cabal of special interests. Whether it's uptown or with the acquiescence of the Mont Foundation or others, there is governors that were Democrat and Republican, plain footsie. The guy who brought Ed Kurtz in originally, the guy who orchestrated, you know what he orchestrated, Mr. Ken Cage? You know what he orchestrated after that mayor was thrown out within a few months? His name was Emerson. He's a tried and true Democrat champion of this area for years. He's been behind much of this. Tim Herman, these are people that make, Tim Herman in a supposed private sector, uh, business is making over two hundred thousand dollars a year. It's as much a private sector operation as of some office of state or federal government. But I'm straying away. What the sins of our own administrations of a generation or more don't justify adding and heaping more sins and greater evils upon this poor oppressed community? Please, just a few more minutes. Is there something I'm gonna read?
I want you to grab one because there's still a lot more to read.
Is there? Oh, I thought I was the last. Okay. But ladies and gentlemen, not only do we know this guy makes more than the governor, a hundred and seventy thousand, I of course talk about Mike Brown. Not only do we have this big layer with Ed Kurtz and his benevolent leadership only taking, what is it, a thousand a month or something? Oh, isn't that nice up there? Oh, pardon me, probably right. Let me read a document that I, a good friend, and thank God I have some people that I know inside the city government that let me know this a few weeks ago. And I just got back in town today. But I'm gonna read this document and I'll read it in, in a more succinct form, if you will. Allow me, Mr. Ken Cage. There's a resolution to employ the services of Michael K. Brown, the city administrator, dated August eighth, uh, two thousand and twelve. Adopted August eighth, uh, two thousand and twelve. Pursuant to the authority granted the emergency financial manager by Public Act seventy-two, the old Public Act that's now been revived. Michael K. Brown shall be employed by the city of Flint in the capacity of city administrator under such time as the emergency financial manager determines that his employment shall cease. Mr. Brown shall carry out duties as assigned and determined by the emergency financial manager. Mr. Brown shall be paid an annual salary of a hundred thousand, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, paid in by weekly installments. I'll flip a lot of this and cut to the chase. These are perks that we weren't aware of, that have been added to this already obscene salary in the most impoverished of communities, in the most dire need of help and fiscal responsibility. In addition to his base compensation, Mr. Brown shall be entitled to actual and necessary expenses related to travel, means, lodging incurred and connected to services for the city and shall submit original copies and receive blah, blah, blah. Number two, procure and maintain at his discretion and at the expense of the city health insurance, life insurance, general liability, professional liability, and motor vehicle insurance. We're paying even his auto insurance. We're paying his mileage coming from his home and financing. So the bottom line is, ladies and gentlemen, we just keep getting ring and ringing and ringing to the point that we don't even recognize it. The last sentence I'll close with, there are a number of city administrator, uh, or city, uh, department heads and the like that are getting ready to retire and they'll be ushered into a new cozy financial settlement where they'll be paid a salary independent of their already existing benefits in retirement. Thank you.
Okay, we are, uh, our next speaker, Mr. Frank Green. Mr. Green.
The last speaker is Jacqueline W., I think that's the last name of the man. Because it's eleven, I apologize.
I'm a citizen of Flint. And I'm here simply to address the citizens of Flint and the city councilmen. My opinions really don't matter, but I'm just here to say a few things to the city council members who have, and I've been told none have done a great job. But for those who have done your job, I applaud you, or I guess I'd say I've praised you. But I'd like to praise the ones who are gearing up and getting ready to do the job that you were elected to do in the best interest of the people, the citizens of Flint, Michigan. One other thing, for those who have not, I would suggest step down, leave, or simply bow out gracefully if there is such a thing among career politicians. For those who have gone before us, who have been in the trenches, in times like these, we need to do different things. The enemy is still among us. Those things that worked in nineteen sixty-eight and nineteen sixty-nine won't work today. I say they won't because the thing is, if the enemy is still attacking us, our defense should be different. So, yes, investigative hearings are needed. And for Mr. May, I've been here before, sat back in this, him telling you your job, to call people in, to put them under oath. I would say if I was running for city council position, I would find out what my duties were before I ran and run on that platform. For him to tell you your job and for people to say, he's a hothead, I would like to use another word and even to describe maybe, Mr. Please, a passionate person, a passionate person because of what's happening in the city of Flint. I am a twenty-two-year member of the United States Air Force. And I would like to say, coming back to the city of Flint in my house, ready to be taken by Chase Bank, I'd like to say the good old boy system is still alive in the city of Flint. It did not leave with General Motors pulled out. It is still here. I've been told, and the Lord did not give me the spirit of fear. I've been told that there are three or four men that own, or could we say run, or control the city of Flint. So all the words that have been said, why not come out and say them? Those men, if there's a woman, maybe they should be here. Maybe we should be addressing them and not city council. Because truly, maybe they are running you if you cannot do your job. The Bible says, stay and show thyself approved, a workman not need to be ashamed. You should be ashamed if you have not done your job for the citizens of Flint. And last thing to the citizens of Flint, from Second Kings, I heard a lady say she was tired of hearing scripture. I never tired of hearing scripture. And from Second Kings, the four leprous men that sat outside the city, they said, why sit we here until we die? If we go back into the city of Flint, we would die. There is no why. If we move forward, there is a chance our healings may keep us alive. So citizens of Flint, there is a chance. If I'm good enough, if you go out to vote, there is a chance you might live. Go out to the polls and vote November sixth. And vote no for the people who allow to come into your city and ravish your city and take your rights from you. Thank you, city council, for listening.
That concludes our speakers for this evening. Uh, you don't believe there's any more resolutions? No more? Our next, uh, city council meeting? Yeah, I remember that you just already did. Our next city council meeting in our schedules are for Monday, September tenth, Monday, September twenty-fourth, Monday, October eighth, and Monday, October twenty-third. Council meeting.
Yeah, I, 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 I yield to the council of all of us. The resolution just passed for investigative hearing.
Thank you. President, House of Representatives. Uh, the investigative, uh, hearing process will start, uh, on September tenth, immediately after following the, uh, council meeting on September tenth at my birthday. So, just to be clear, if we have a number of speakers like we did this evening, we have to send out subpoenas for where people appear. We say at the end of the council meeting, it could be anywhere from seven thirty to eight thirty or nine o'clock, minute and five. We have forty speakers this evening. I, I'm not trying to curtail. No, I, I understand. Much of the discussion.
Our recommendation is to, Ken, to this is.
I'm sorry.
Our recommendation to, uh, to that is that we will adjourn of meeting at seven o'clock, a little later than seven o'clock. And then we'll start the investigative hearing. Again, we will just go to that particular time. That's all. So we'll use the meeting at that time to go into the investigative hearing.
So that would be the September tenth meeting?
That's the right one.
September 10. So it's clear Republican, I think we need to make sure we recognize this, that on Monday, September 10, in our regular city council meeting at 7:00 PM, we will suspend the regular council meeting and begin the investigative hearing. And then, and then at the end of the investigative hearing, we will probably then adjourn the council meeting to the next meeting, so any speakers at that point in time would have to come back to the September 24 council meeting. Is there a fair assessment?
Yeah, but I don't see, well, if we include the meeting prior to 7:00.
Right. We'll be fine, we'll be fine. No, I don't want people that are here to speak have to wait till 10:00 or 10:30. I want them to recognize the fact that we're gonna end the council meeting, and at the 2:00, there should be a hearing at some, which I think is reasonable.
In terms of procedure, I think they have to talk about procedure, protocol, as we go forward with the passing of a couple of resolutions tonight, my recommendation to this body is that if we go forward, after we would have absent the local city manager, we'll go to the legal department, have them respond with a answer very quickly. I do understand the orders that Ed Kurtz put out about city personnel and city resources, but then after that, we'll secure our attorney to go forward to the appropriate court to file an injunction, and also to issue a subpoenas. And I talk about procedures in this case, in Council Kincaid, Councilman Powell, over here, we have a few different cases that we have to go, to K. Moore, 69, oh, I'm sorry, Circuit Court. There is going to be a big conference, Peter Ray also represented uptown, near Westwood, in the lawsuit with Genesee Towers, he also represented Tim Herman in that Sagu lawsuit. So there will be a conference of interest in that Circuit Court table, previous hearing, that when there's a conference, maybe I'll give you to the silent term. I think we'll take that at first, as we go proceeding, I think Mr. President, you might like to share, previously our last one was a more aggressive hearing, pursuant to Public Act 72, having before long renewed, and I think you were receiving a letter that you might share that with us.
Yeah, I didn't, we did receive a letter, our national clerk was reading, I didn't bring my glasses, it's a pretty small fight. We did, we passed the resolution a few weeks ago, and we sent a letter to the treasurer's office under Public Act 72, there's a 10-day period where you can appeal the emergency loan board's decision. So we drafted a letter, Councilman Freeman, and I worked on a letter, we sent it over to Lansing along with a copy of the right picture, requesting a hearing before the emergency loan board, which determined the emergency financial manager of the city of Flint. And I just wanted to read the letter for you, please.
Sure. Dear Mr. Kincaid, thank you for your August 14, 2012, letters to Governor Snyder and State Treasurer, and respectively. Your letters concern the financial emergency in the city of Flint, were referred to me for reply. In your letters, you requested a hearing to approve the determination of the local emergency financial assistance loan board under Section 15 of Public Act 72 of 1990, the Local Government Fiscal Responsibility Act. It should be noted that the term letters was interpreted in the statutory process. The local emergency financial assistance loan board made no determination under Section 15 of Act 72 or under any other section of that act. The board merely appointed a new emergency financial manager for the city pursuant to Section 18 of the act. Section 15 of Act 72, while Section 15 of Public Act 4, the Local Government and Social Accountability Act, authorizes the governor to determine, among other things, whether the financial emergency exists in the local government. In regards to the city of Flint, Governor Snyder determined that a financial emergency existed and notified the mayor and the city council on Friday, 8th, 2011. The governors, Governor Lee, 2011, also advised you of the statutory right within seven days of relocation to request a hearing regarding that determination. It is noteworthy that city officials, including the city council, declined to request a hearing. The deadline to have requested such a warning expired on 11th, 2011. And a letter is signed sincerely, Fred Henning, Director of Bureau of Local Government Services.
Let me respond to this, because there's a couple of issues that I have with this. Under Public Act 4, the governor appointed the review board, which included former state senator Bob Emerson, he was the budget director for the state of Michigan. They appointed Darnell Hurley, who was city administrator, temporary mayor for the city of Flint. He was the city administrator and the emergency financial manager from 2002 to 2040. That group of individuals completely different than the emergency loan board under Public Act 72. And what they're saying is, is that because they had this appointed body under Public Act 4, which was appointed by the governor, which we all, they were going to determine that the city was under financial stress, is a completely different body of individuals than those under Public Act 72. It's pretty clear the governor and the treasurer's office is gonna do whatever they're gonna do, and that's why it's so important that Public Act 4 gets denied in the election and all the other. It's our contention, and we all agree, that Public Act 72 is not in effect, that when Public Act 4 went into effect, Public Act 72 was repealed. And just because it's been suspended and put on the ballot, Mr. Dumas, Red, the state Supreme Court's chief judge of the Supreme Court, that even write the notice back that Public Act 72 is not in effect. And I think when we appeal over in Circuit Court, you'll get that decision that'll really help us in determining where we need to go in the future. We knew that when we sent this letter that it wasn't really enacted on by the treasurer's office. Those powers that be that are in control in this community and individuals in the uptown redevelopment group that determine to get someone here, their influence is gonna outweigh anything that we do unless the court acts on Public Act 72, so, you know, we're gonna continue this way. And you know what's really interesting to me, though, and I haven't said this publicly, I'll say it tonight, that when Ed Kurtz was appointed the emergency financial manager in 2002, Darnell Hurley was the acting mayor, he made Darnell Hurley the city administrator, Darnell Hurley African-American, cost maybe 92,000 or 93,000. Mike Brown was acting as the emergency manager, appointed him city administrator, and as Alex Harris just read, he gets $170,000, of course, a whole bunch of that, but, I mean, it really kind of shows you, you know, where this leadership downstairs, or I don't even wanna call it leadership, but people in power are really focused on, they're not really focused on the finances of the city. And I guarantee you, the audit's been, I said it earlier, the audit's been done, the numbers don't lie. When the audit's done this year, Mike Brown has agreed in higher depths of the city of Flint than when he took over as emergency. And those numbers will come up real soon, and those numbers won't lie because we're backed by an independent, owned, leading firm. And I'll be sure to remind everybody what that deficit increases, and it's gonna be substantial. Any other council personnel, can you speak, council?
Yeah, just one with previous referrals that I sent out as well, of corporate departments getting Kurtz in, that they will have to be monitored as a referral to this council body, and I would like on referrals transferred to free information requests as a citizen, they can have to buy that. So I want all those same questions I asked about the personal contracts, the amounts of money that's being made, you just make a free information request, and it'll be that.
Okay, I would like to ask those referrals and sort of. Anyone else? Thank you all for being here tonight with the invasion. We appreciate you being here. We are a journey.